Did they frame that house?
Good evening, and welcome to the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make just a quick note. Our usual fire exits are blocked due to construction over here, so you can't get out that way. The available exits are to the rear, out this door and to the rear, or to the one in the parking lot, which is probably what you came in on. So I just make you alert to that. We'll begin with continued public hearings. We have three applicants for public hearings. The first is Hyde Park Quick Stop, twenty-two oh three Z two. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I would say a motion to open the public meeting.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good, how are you?
We're good. We're good.
So at our last meeting, I think we pretty much covered all of our bases. I think we were just waiting for county comment, and I understand you have that.
We have that, and we are authorized to move ahead.
Excellent.
Are there any other questions of the board for the Quick Stop?
I don't.
No? Anybody from the public have comments?
Maybe one.
Yes.
Would you remind us why you had to increase it? The state asked you to do something that...
We actually decreased that one variance. And the DOT...
The improper...
Yeah, the DOT asked us to, instead of having two accesses, driveway accesses that had an in and out, we actually changed it to two accesses, one in, one out, which reduced the amount of pavement. So that was the reason for the reduction.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, council, anything?
I've got nothing, Mr. Jones.
Anything? Nope? Okay. There being no other public comments, I would move to close the public hearing. Public meeting, there's...
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a resolution on that. Jim, the Hyde Park Quick Stop, would you be kind enough to read that, please?
It'll take me twenty-five minutes. Resolution to re-grant three area variances, Hyde Park Quick Stop, forty-nine twelve Albany Post Road, Stafford, dated today, resolution twenty-two dash oh three Z two. Whereas the applicant, Moria Associates PC, on behalf of owners, Jack Boys Properties LLC, has submitted an application for three area variances to renovate and increase the size of an existing gas station at property located at forty-nine twelve Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel six oh six six dash zero two dash eight seven nine six two two in the neighborhood business zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Hyde Park Quick Stop, prepared by Moria Architects PC, dated March first of two thousand twenty-two, and engineering plans entitled grading and utility plan, prepared by William Willingham Engineering, revised June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And whereas in two thousand twenty-two, the applicant sought an area variance from zoning law section one oh eight dash five point one five to permit increased lot coverage of eighty-one point one percent, where seventy percent is the maximum, to allow for wraparound asphalt drive for deliveries and access to additional gas pumps as authorized by the town code. This is the first variance. And whereas the applicant sought an area variance from zoning law section one oh eight dash five point one five to permit a decreased front yard setback of five foot seven inches, where twenty foot is required, to allow for the relocation of underground fuel storage tanks out of the stream corridor buffer to an area on the west side of the property towards Route nine. Whereas the applicant sought an area variance from zoning law section one oh eight dash five point one five to permit a building scale in square foot of nine thousand seventy-one square foot, where seventy-five hundred square foot is the maximum, to allow for an adequately sized canopy over the increased number of gas pumps, third variance. Whereas in accordance to the Town Code and State Seeker Act, the planning board is required to define the classification of the proposed project as lead agency. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section two six seven dash B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section one oh eight dash thirty-three point six B two regarding the requested variances. Number one, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The first variance, though the increased lot coverage is numerically substantial, allows for renovations and improvements to the site that will both increase its safety and benefit the nearby residents. The site is the only fueling station on Route nine for miles between Hyde Park and Rhinebeck in addition to being one of the only convenience stores in the area. The increased coverage allows for more vehicular traffic lanes, increasing safety of the site for both pedestrians and drivers. Moreover, the site coverage and resulting requested variance have been further reduced on this re-application. Furthermore, the nearby KO storage facility also exceeds its lot coverage limit. Consequently, the applicant's proposed increase keeps with the character of the immediate surroundings. The second variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood, as the fuel storage tanks are underground and not visible to patrons or passives on Route nine. The third variance for increased scale is necessary primarily to allow larger canopy over the gas pumps. The scale could conform to code if the applicant removed some gas pumps and subsequently reduced the canopy size. However, as stated previously, this the only fueling station along Route nine for miles. Importantly, this increase in scale is for gas canopy, which is elevated twenty feet above the site and therefore will not cause significant impact when customers use the site. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variances. The proposed variances will allow the applicant to develop a significantly larger portion of the parcel while constructing a new facility that can better accommodate customers. The site design with the wraparound asphalt drive will provide safe access for trucks and trailers, thereby increasing the general safety for all patrons. Additionally, relocating the underground fuel storage to the area near Route nine will not encroach the front of the site. The scale variance is only necessary due to the requirement of a canopy at the fueling station and occupies over thirty percent of the project's total gross square footage. Relatedly, the canopy is mandatory to provide fire suppression over the fuel pumps, let alone protection for customers from the elements in inclement weather. Three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. The first variance would increase the lot coverage to seventy-nine point five percent, where seventy percent is the maximum permitted, which is less than a fourteen percent increase. The second variance that the applicant seeks is to reduce the front yard setback to five foot seven inches, where twenty foot is the maximum, is the minimum permitted. If granted, the second variance will result in a decrease of fourteen five, fourteen feet five inches, which represents an over seventy percent decrease. It is noted that the front yard setback is required for the underground fuel storage that will not be visible. The third variance applicant seeks is to increase the scale to nine thousand seventy-one square feet, where seventy-five hundred square feet is the maximum permitted. The additional fifteen seventy-one square feet represents an increase, an approximate twenty percent increase. Number four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The first and third variances will have no discernible impact to the environment, as the existing building on the site is already large. Any impact of stormwater runoff from the increased lot coverage will be mitigated through stormwater treatment facilities around the site. The second variance, though numerically substantial, will in fact benefit the environment. The applicant seeks to move the underground fuel storage tanks further outside of the wet line stream corridor buffer to its east and south. After considering the related site improvements and the addition of more gas pumps, this proposed location for the fuel storage is the best option. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. Be it therefore resolved that zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section one oh eight dash thirty-three point five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Agarwal. Mr. Agarwal has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. We look forward to getting gas, clean gas at a lower price.
I don't know about lower.
Yeah. Yeah. The next public hearing is for Woods at eight Albertson Street, Hyde Park, twenty-three dash twelve Z. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Gary Beck from Z Three Consultants.
We would like a motion to open the continued public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead, sir. Can you sort of refresh us in terms of...
So this is for eight Albertson. It was an existing porch on a dilapidated building that we removed without knowing. We're looking to rebuild it as it was, and we didn't know that you needed a variance after you tore it down completely. We tore it down because it was unsafe.
Right.
That's why we're here.
Let me ask you, at this point, you're asking for a variance of up to three, as close as three point five feet to the property line?
We're looking to put it back exactly where it was.
Right. Is there any way to decrease that? In other words, go to five feet from the property line? I'm worried about your close to the property line, what might occur there.
Sure, we can move that right side in two feet. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that would be good. And I think...
Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor, do we, we don't have a resolution?
Not yet. But if you've gotten enough information, you can close the public hearing. You would have to issue the determination and vote within sixty days from closing the public hearing.
Okay, so the next meeting's good.
So the next meeting.
Okay, so I would...
Oh, you gotta open it for the public comment?
It's open. Are there any other public comments on this proposal? There being none? I would move that we close the public hearing.
Motion.
And it would be to the east.
Well, I don't know about that. I went to Arlington, but on the right side, if you're facing the house, on the right side.
Towards Route nine.
No, 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 the right side. You want towards the river. The river's west.
The river is the...
Right, so that's the line that the neighbors...
Away from the side yard.
Away from the side yard. You want to come in five feet.
Another foot and a half.
You got it.
Okay.
Foot and a half and two feet.
We were three and a half feet, so you want it five feet, so another foot and a half.
Ted, what do you think?
Okay, that's good.
So, Counselor, at this point, to expedite for them, what do we need to do?
Well, you could vote tonight if you so choose. The resolution itself has not been written yet, so that would come after. Typically, the board has the resolution before them, prior to the vote.
Okay. I would then move that we, let me see if I can... Do you want to phrase it better than that?
Well, if you...
Just go in there.
Okay, so you can make a motion...
I'm gonna make a motion.
To grant the area variance...
Grant the area variance.
At a side yard setback of five feet?
Five feet. Five, yes. At a side yard setback of five feet. Is there any other? That was the only, that was the major setback. That was the major variance on it.
Yep.
So you should go through the elements of the area variance on the record.
Excuse me, when we closed the public hearing, I only got a motion, I didn't get a second?
Oh, that needs to happen first.
I see.
Second.
Thank you, Richard.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Why don't we just do it next month?
Sorry.
Let's not go through that.
Let's do it next month.
We'll do it next month. It'll be ready.
Okay.
We have to go through all the conditions.
We'll finish, we'll finish the resolution and complete it next month.
So you want me to come back next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll have it then.
Okay.
There will be a vote at that time.
Yes, oh, yes, you'll have the vote then.
Perfect.
And you'll walk away with what you need.
Five feet.
Five feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we would ask you to stop by and change the application form?
Sure. Can I email it right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we have closed the public hearing and continued the public hearing.
Sorry, you got all in favor on closing the public hearing? We have motion and a second?
Second.
No, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Believe it or not, we're not this confused. Okay. The next public hear, the final public hearing is for Hagan, four Old Violet Avenue.
Hi.
Sorry, I couldn't read my assistant this time. She had a scheduled man.
We have, I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Again, we are looking at a variance to change the front yard setback from fifty feet to thirty-two feet to building in addition for the office and deck with stairs across the back of the house. I think the last meeting, we had to go to the county, and I think that's been clarified, so we have the ability to move ahead on that.
Awesome.
Is there any public comments on this? Board? Anything?
No. One question. The height of the new addition?
Same as the house.
Perfect.
All right. There being no other comments, I would move to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I believe we have a resolution. All right. Paul's going to read. Okay, please.
Do I skip where it is? It's really short. Should I skip these? All right, hang on.
Resolution to grant area variance, Jennifer Hagan, old four, Old Violet Ave, Hyde Park, New York, one two five three eight, date November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, resolution number twenty-three dash thirteen Z. Whereas applicant Chris Hagan, on behalf of property owner Jennifer Hagan, has submitted an application for an area variance to build a sixteen-foot by twelve-foot addition for an office and a deck with the stairs across the back of the house. The project at property located at four Old Violet Ave, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number six one six three dash ten dash four eight one seven three two in the neighborhood zoning district, the site. And whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled single-family house deck and office room addition, prepared by Paul Terms PE, dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section one oh eight dash five one five bulk regulations to permit a front yard setback from Pine Brook Drive of thirty-two feet, where fifty feet is required. Whereas pursuant to six NYCRR six one seven dot five, the granting of an area variance for single-family, two-family, or three-family residents is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is not subject to review under the act. And whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section two six seven dash B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section one oh eight dash three three dot six B two regarding the requested The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The addition and deck will not be noticeable, as they will be continued off the existing roof line in the rear yard with the same siding, windows, and trim as existing dwelling. The addition and deck will remain in the character of the neighborhood and nearby properties. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Without the requested variance, the existing HVAC system would need to be modified at a considerable expense, and existing roof line could not be continued. The requested variance is numerically substantial. The front yard variance requested represents thirty-six percent reduction from fifty feet to thirty-two feet. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The project is on the back of the house and is specifically designed to maintain the existing roof line and will also serve to enhance the utility of the house. The difficulties are self-created. The owner purchased the house as is. Be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section one oh eight dash three three dot five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Donnelly has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Good luck.
Congratulations.
When's the party?
I'll let you know, this summer for sure, and the little one will be ready. She's gonna have treats for all you guys.
Thank you for coming. We now move into our public hearings. The first is the Enclave at Hyde Park. They are asking for a renewal of their variance. I would move and open the public hearing for this. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Want to move that a little closer to you so we can...
Can you hear me now?
Hear all the nuances. Yes.
So I'm back for the variance extension for density variance that was originally approved for Enclave. I'm Amy Patten from the LRC Group, representing the applicant fifty-four Hyde LLC, and I have Sam here with me, who is the applicant. Since our last meeting, we have gone ahead and scheduled the testing necessary for Department of Health approval, so hopefully we will get that submitted either by the end of this month or beginning of next. And once the Department of Health reviews and approves, we can go ahead and get the foundation started.
Are there any other parts of the infrastructure that haven't been completed yet to move ahead?
No, I don't believe so. This is what we've been waiting for.
This is gone, and I guess my frustration is, this is probably, what, the seventh year of this?
This is the sixth extension.
Sixth extension.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do we know we're gonna move ahead this time?
Can I address this? My name is...
Sam, I appreciate it. I just, believe me, I'm a lot more frustrated than all of you. I, I'm gonna give you the dates, just dates, because I've developed in multiple states, multiple towns in New York State, never have I experienced, have I experienced in this town, unfortunately. And Ted is my witness, I've worked diligently and hard getting everything the town has asked for me, and every single time I'm ready to go, there's another obstacle thrown at me. I've never had, and I'll go through the dates, I've never had that I have to put up a million dollars in escrow saying I'm going to finish something, and then the town tell me, I'm not issuing you a permit until you actually finish the work. I've permitted to build houses when I finish, until you finish the water and sewer. Well, I have a million dollars sitting in your escrow account saying that I'm going to finish the water and sewer. Why are you making me do that work before I'm building houses? Why can't I do both at the same time? Even even after that, once you finish the water and sewer, to go tell me, okay, you're very nice of you, you finished the water and sewer, now you have to fix, check the lines, flush the lines, even though you have no houses to connect to the lines, you have to fill the lines with water and pressure test all the lines, doing all that work before you build a house makes absolutely zero sense, and I've never had this happen to me. And I'm gonna go through the dates with you. Just give us our frustration, the amount of money and effort that we're putting in, and obstacles being thrown at us for years is just, and then the vandalism of the property, and you probably know the hate that happened recently at the property, which we have to endure while we're asking and doing the right things every single time. I just want to give you some dates. The original variance was given to us on March twenty-two, two thousand seventeen. The actual final security agreement was signed by the town on December, on September ninety-nine of two thousand nineteen, two years later, more than two and a half years later. We actually had until waiting, until the town actually signed the security agreements. The DOH giving us, so the town told us, okay, you cannot do anything until you have DOH approval to build the water and sewer plant. We got DOH approval on October of two thousand twenty-one. Now, we are, as soon as we had the DOH approval, we were hoping to get permits from the town to be able to actually do the work that DOH approved. It took us from October to April eleventh of two thousand twenty-two to finally get the permits from the town to be able to do the work that DOH has approved. We met the town engineer on site on September two thousand twenty-two to do that work. Received a memo from the town on February twenty-seventh of this year, of two thousand twenty-three, basically outlining points, including the bond that we have to replace, because now it's years later, they want us to increase the bond, because all these years later, prices have increased. No problem. So they came on site and said, okay, you guys gotta increase the bond. So I said, we know, no problem, pass a new resolution to increase the bond. We were on the agenda with new security agreements, on the agenda on March thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three, when I found out the next day we were thrown off the agenda. The reason we were thrown off the agenda is because at that time, the issue was with Signature Bank, this bank or that bank, and so we redid our security agreements, because the original security agreements, we have with Signature Bank. We redid with Flagstar Bank a month later. To today's date, I have emailed someone attorney asking, put us back on the agenda. We have our new security agreements, get us back on the agenda. We still have not been placed on the agenda on the security agreements to be replaced. The DOH inspected this water and sewer plant on May of two thousand twenty-four, gave us a few punch list items to do. And I'm sorry, May of, May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, sorry, May twenty-fourth. They came back with some few items. They said, okay, your water plant is finished, your sewer plant is finished, but we cannot give you the authorization to operate until you have the sewer lines and water lines pressure tested and making sure. It's something that you usually do when you finish construction, not before you start construction. So we had no choice, we had to do that. We redid a full line of sewer. We are going, we went ahead, we pressure tested every single water line. We have, we have spent millions of dollars to this point, and we cannot get a single permit to continue with this project. We have renewed the entrance with the Duchess County so many times. I've never ever experienced what I'm experiencing over here. The town supervisor, I've met with him several times, he sympathizes, he said, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. But no one, at the end of the day, I think this is gonna be a beautiful project, it's a nice project, but it's been sitting since two thousand and nine, and I'm just getting, it's just so difficult. I'm just getting thrown obstacles after obstacles.
What's this, you said the DO, Department of Health is scheduled for approval?
We have the necessary testing for their approval scheduled for the end of this month.
Is there all the pressure stuff?
That's, that's, that's the final, that's the final, that's the pressure lining of the water lines. But to be honest with you, unfortunately, my experiences, I don't know what's gonna come after that. So hopefully the town, Department of Health is gonna give you... is gonna give me authorization to operate after that. So I don't know if I'm gonna get a new memo from Pizza Terro saying, "Oh, we found out new things that you wanna do." It's been, it's been a nightmare. It's been really a nightmare to deal with this, unfortunately. So I hope I'm not gonna have to come back for another extension. I hope I will be able to finally get this project onto construction. Now the winter is coming. Will I be able to put a foundation in the next few months? I don't know. So we're looking at March again.
If we give you the, if we give you the variance extension, what's your best estimate in terms of when you'll be able to move ahead?
I would love tomorrow. So if we get next week the DOH approval, that means we took the entire memo from Pizza Terro's office, and we literally checked every box besides, again, we have to go on to the agenda. I hope the town is gonna pull us on the agenda because they have our new security agreements. We have the money in the accounts. So hopefully, the person on the agenda gets us approved. It's not in our hands. And if we can, we'll try to get foundations in before the winter. If not, it means we'll have to wait until after winter.
Okay. Any comments?
None.
Okay. Counsel, anything? Any other public?
Nope. Just wanna clarify for the record that this would not be just a simple extension. The variances had lapsed. This would be a re-grant of the variances, just like what the board did for...
Okay, okay, all right. There being no other... Go ahead.
Did this have to go to the county? Because it's a county road?
No, we're all right on that.
Okay.
We have, we have permission to be able to grant that.
Kathy, was this...
We did go to the county. We didn't realize that at the last meeting. I realized that after the meeting. It was sent to the county. It came back as a matter of local concern. So we're good.
So it's under our jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So if you wanna open it up for anyone from the public?
Yeah. Any, I don't, I thought I had. Anybody from the public? No. Any other comments or questions?
Let me sympathize with you.
Thank you.
And we do sympathize with your frustration. All right. There being no others, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think we have, we have a motion. We do?
Nope, there's no resolution. So the board can vote and approve or deny the resolution at next month's meeting.
Okay, all right. Can we vote now?
December.
You would have to go through the elements. I suggest that the board...
Twenty-first day.
That is your discretion, but if you'd like me to prepare the resolution in advance so that you can read it the night of?
I would.
It would be prepared for the next meeting.
I think the feeling right now is to, I haven't asked each to vote, but in terms of the feeling is to grant you that variance.
For sure.
We will draft that and approve that at the next meeting. And I think at the same time, you can move ahead with your, whatever tests you have left so we can get the project going.
Yes.
I'd like to see the gates open when I draft by.
Thanks, Samir. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I always have one stock question. There will be a hydrant out on the street so that people across the street in Molly's Way will have some access to some water if they needed it.
Access to water for...
Originally, it was, they were gonna, it was gonna be supply of water because they have trouble with their wells.
So there is a hydrant at the, where the beginning of the drive is, but it's a flush hydrant. So I'm not sure it would help here. It's more for...
Do you know what the agreement was? I don't. I just remember...
I don't.
It was when I was on the county board. And I, hmm, I don't remember the exact words, but I thought that it was, "In order to supply them with water, should something happen," because they've struggled with water for...
Can you just repeat the road name? You said Molly's Way? Okay. I will look into that for you.
Yeah, just see if there's something specific.
At least understand that at the next meeting.
Sure.
And do I need a...
So you've now moved to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I moved, yeah, I thought we did. Okay, moved to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we will see you next, next December...
Twenty-first.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Okay. The next is continued public hearing for Duncan.
This is a new public hearing.
This is a new public hearing. This is a new public hearing? No, it is a new public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brandon Petrello with Mori Architects. How are you?
We're good, we're good.
I do have the presentation available if you'd like to see it again, but nothing has changed. I do believe you've gotten the updated reduced signage to the fourteen inch. If you don't have that, I do have paper copies available if the board needs those.
Okay. The question I have is, on the, go ahead.
Sorry, if you'd like to open the new public hearing?
Make a motion, we open the public hearing.
We've got too many here.
And we need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. We'll get it. The question is, do we, do we need the, do we need the expansion on all three sites? I understand the building. You wanna, you wanna put just Duncan up there. But when I look at the other monument signs, it seems to me, you want sixteen inches?
Fourteen inches from eleven.
From eleven.
Yeah. It's, and if you remember, the eleven inches, I mean, we have an existing sign that was based on the original logo design.
The existing sign is eleven, right?
The existing sign is eleven with two stacked rows and then eight-inch drive-through underneath. We'll be going to a fourteen-inch, one stack of letters, and then a seven and a half drive-through underneath. So from three stacks of letters, we're going to two. So the proportions of the sign remain the same. And again, I don't know if I have, I do have the numbers here, I think. You know, overall, the reduction in signage, even going to the fourteen-inch letters, the existing monument signs have, there's the East Monument sign and the West Monument sign. Both of them are, one of them is seventeen point four square feet total. The other one's twenty-one point eight. I'm gonna change both of those to sixteen point twelve. So they're both significantly, there's significant reductions there. I do understand as far as lettering size, that's the variance that we're looking for. But from a signage perspective on the, on the surface?
A perspective? And I've heard before, a logo is different than letters. Would that be better or worse?
Well, I think what Duncan is doing, and I can't speak to them because I'm not Duncan corporate, but they're making their logo the letters.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. A logo, we treat differently, don't we?
No, it's the same ten inches. Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same height.
Okay.
It's actually, logos are in any dimension, whereas letters are only height that is considered. But these are clearly letters, even though they're stylized.
Okay.
And I would point out, I don't believe that you can even get larger logos through planning board discretion. You can only get larger letters. Is that correct?
No, I think both, both.
You can do both? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and I appreciate it.
I guess going, going, having driven by Duncan three times today, I didn't stop for coffee, however. The, you know, Duncan is very evident there on the, on the signs. And on the sign in the, not the one by the road, but the one by the shopping center. The question is, who sees that? We know where Duncan is.
When you're coming from the shopping plaza, if you're not familiar with the area and you're in the shopping plaza, you don't know that building's a Duncan unless you see that sign. That building doesn't look like a Duncan. You don't have any idea. Now, you know it's a drive-through. I'll grant you that. And it's a busy drive-through, and that's a good thing.
You can't get, you can't get to the drive-through coming off of the...
Well, but you can enter the site, and you'd have to loop around. You're right. But you know it's a Duncan because of that sign. That's the only way you know that you have a Dunkin' Donuts there.
I'm not saying take the sign down, but does it need to make it bigger?
Again, I, my point of contention and what I've been trying to say is I don't think we're making the sign bigger. We are actually making the sign smaller. And if we were to meet the ten inch, again, if I, in the presentation, you meet those ten-inch letters, that thing is about thirty percent of that sixty-square-foot sign face. You know, it's going to look like a dot inside of a large panel. I think aesthetically, you'll be less happy with it. It'll meet your code, but I think aesthetically, it'll look worse.
I got a different question. Can we fix the traffic issue?
I, I have seen when it is busy...
Do we paint a line someplace that, so people might consider...
So what we've been, with this, we are going to have some new striping that goes down, some fresh striping. So we're trying to, actually, that is one of Duncan's things. There's gonna be more channelization icons on the pavement. So hopefully, people will scoot a little bit more to the left side instead of taking up the whole thing.
Maybe move the curb over to...
That is not, unfortunately, part of the renovation.
One of our applicants compromised with us a little bit. I don't know, are you, are you willing to do that tonight?
What was the question?
One of our applicants compromised a little bit on a thing. I mean...
He already did compromise.
I kind of feel like I did a little bit, yeah. I mean, I actually have already brought it down from my original presentation.
Because we're required to give the minimum.
Right. So I've tried to bring it down even further since our first meeting.
Go ahead, good question. I think it looks good the way it is. I don't see any problems with your proposal. Let's see from the road. Mr. Eggerwall?
I'm fine with everything.
You're fine with the lettering as it is?
The proposal.
Other proposals?
If they fix the traffic flow, the lettering is fine.
We will do our best. That's all I can promise.
That's tongue-in-shook, you know.
And that will not be a condition.
I can't change the way people drive, unfortunately.
All right. So what we'll need to do is look at a... All right. We need to continue the public hearing for next time?
Yes.
All right. Is there any public, are there any other public hearing, public comments? There being none, I would...
Nobody's gonna support me on that traffic issue? Thanks.
I would, I would move to continue the public hearing to Thursday, December twenty-first, when we can make a...
Motion.
Decision on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. I think we've got a position now that we can draft a resolution.
We'll wrap it up for you on the twenty-first.
I appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Our next public hearing is for the CIA Hotel in Villas, twenty-three fifteen. I would move for opening a new public hearing.
I move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
We had an opportunity, the variant, they are asking for a variance to put a temporary building on the site, which is within fifty feet of the creek. The, this would be a temporary. It is a, it is a sales, a sales vehicle. It is what, a double-wide? it is a it is a sales, a sales vehicle. It is what, a double wide, both I and, oh, do I have to open the public hearing? No. Again. Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope. Sorry. You already opened the public hearing.
I thought we did, but my vice president, anyway, you are double opened. You're going to, we're glad you're here.
It's good to be here.
We've seen you here, and we're going to talk, and everybody, everybody's welcome. Yeah. You should see the notes I have to try and follow. You want to talk a little bit about that? I mean, both Jerry and I were at the site visit. We looked at what you were proposing in terms of putting a trailer there. We don't see much disruption of the of the, it's a grass area that this trailer would be on. It would be there temporarily while you are, I think, you anticipated being there until you have the first building built?
That is correct.
Okay. So you may have to come back for an extension of the of the variance, if we if we were to give you a variance for a year.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to make any comments on that to the other three gentlemen that were not, didn't have an opportunity to see your plan?
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's, it's, it's going to be in an area that's already completely disturbed. It 's mowed and and it was part of the clearing that was done when the CIA built student housing right there. So if you saw the aerials that we prepared, it's a completely disturbed, mowed and maintained area. It's up, it's up on the let, you know, pretty much up away from the stream, you know, it's not.
It's above the floodplain.
Well, way above the floodplain.
Thirty feet above the creek?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a trailer on wheels, so there'll be no impervious surface there. So we did it purposely so water would run under and and infiltrate.
You have your own water system?
We're going to have all in water in sewer, so we don't have to hook into any waters, no septic, no sewer. It's, the planning board heard it yesterday and issued a neg deck right before, so we can come to you with hopefully being able to get our approvals. And then we have to go back to them. But they issued a four-page negative declaration.
Okay.
And I think the site is a really easy on and easy off as well.
Yeah.
Really nicely.
It is. It's perfect. I mean, it dead ends that little
Absolutely.
road where there's no traffic, no pedestrian. You walk a couple of feet, the bridges, they'll they'll pedestrian over the bridge. The planning board made us place a small carport on the other side where the ATV will be stored outside of the stream corridor. So there'll be no fueling on the site. Any fueling will take place, probably in the Cocos, you know, lot. We'll be using existing trails, no, no tree clearing, no brush removal or anything of that. There's all existing. We took the planning board and others to see the existing trails and so forth, so.
So the idea is, we could come into this this facility, you could show what the concept is, then you could take us, walk across the bridge and get onto a
It's a path. You go around three, you could do about a three quarter circular. You can get out if you want and see it. And, yeah, and it'll be temporary just until we build that first leasehold unit, first unit. Then we'll move the sales office into that.
Questions? Looks good. Mr. Egwol, anything?
Good. Thanks.
Mr. Donnelly?
Nope.
How temporary? In other words, can we say that it's it's going to be there for a year?
We, that's, that's the hope, but, you know, it's.
We're pretty sure we'll be there a little longer than a year. I don't want to, we're going to have to come back for an extension.
For an extension.
But I think we said sixteen months is what we had originally talked about.
So if we go two years?
Excuse me?
If we go two years, that might avoid the sixteen month additional extension?
Yes. Yes, it probably would.
I'd like to keep it at a year. Okay.
You would?
Yeah. All right. Okay. Anybody from the public? Any other comments? I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have a resolution here. Resolution, November six.
Should we make an amendment or read it first?
If you would like to discuss what condition
Before you read it.
for the temporary trailer, you would like, if there's a timeframe after it is installed that the board would like to see it removed, you could discuss it at this time.
Why can't we do two years to avoid them coming back?
Which, which you have to keep.
Or eighteen months.
You'd want to go two years?
Eighteen months, maybe.
Can we do that?
Give him some some breathing.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Eighteen months?
They're nice people, but I don't want to see them again.
Make it indefinite.
And just to clarify, that would be eighteen months after the trailer is installed on site?
Yeah.
Eighteen months from the time that the is installed. Okay.
She's going to, give us some words right there.
Yeah, this will be amended after the meeting.
It'll be amended after the meeting?
And do we have to vote on the amendment?
Nope, because you have not read the resolution here.
Okay, so we save the step.
Why don't we put that in there?
Yep, I'm writing it in right now.
Okay. Okay. So as we get to the further resolve, you'll put that as a condition. Okay.
Can I ask clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
If if the trailer is not positioned within a year, does does it expire? Or?
So the way, because of one oh eight dash thirty-three, if the authorized activity under this variance does not occur, the variance itself would still lapse.
All right.
Correct. It's just the variance will expire once it's vested eighteen months after the trailer is installed.
It doesn't have to be twelve months. We'll put it in, then we'll come back. Okay. We move, we can move ahead?
Yep.
With the reading?
Go for it.
Uh, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, resolution twenty-three dash fifteen Z, whereas the applicant, NRI Hyde Park LLC, with the consent and approval of the owner, Culinary Institute of America, has submitted an application for an area variance to locate a temporary sales trailer of the project at property located at nineteen ninety-five twenty-sixty-six Campus Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number six oh six three dash oh two eight eight nine eight five seven, in the St. Andrews District and Corridor Business District, the site, and whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled overall site plan for the temporary sales trailer prepared by Labella Engineering, dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and elevations and renderings prepared by Gensler Architect, revised September twenty-two-three. Whereas, the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law, section one oh eight, four point three, G two A, to permit the sitting of a temporary sales trailer and ADA parking space within the hundred-foot stream corridor buffer for the Maragie Kill, where the temporary, did I miss that? Where the temporary sales trailer would be fifty-six feet away from the Maragie Kill at its closest point, and whereas the temporary sales trailer is associated with a larger development project proposed for the site known as the CIA Hotel and Villas, which is under review by the planning board, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section two sixty-seven B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, section one oh eight, three three point six B two, regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed temporary sales trailer will be internal to the site in an area that is not visible from off-site and will be located in an area which has previously been disturbed. Moreover, as indicated by the applicant, the sales trailer will be temporary. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for, by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variance. Applicant has indicated it is not feasible to conduct the sales and marketing activity proposed from an existing building on the site. Applicant has further submitted that the proposed location for the sales trailer has been approved by the property owners, Culinary Institute of America, and is logically placed because the area has previously been disturbed and would not require further clearing of trees or vegetation. By number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. Requested variance will result in this sale trailer being located within, wholly within the hundred-foot stream corridor buffer with its closest point located fifty-six feet from a Maragie Kill. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect on or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood district. The temporary sales trailer will be located in an area which has already been disturbed. Further, the sales trailer will be equipped with self-contained potable water and wastewater facilities and will be brought onto the site and will remain on wheels raised off the ground such that the water can flow and infiltrate the ground beneath the sales trailer. Number five, the difficulties are self-created. Applicants obtain their lease, leasehold interest for the site as is. Be further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, eighteen months from from when the trailer is installed on site is
Sorry, just to clarify, the variance will expire.
The variance will expire eighteen months from when the trailer is installed on site. Number two, pursuant to section one oh eight, thirty-three, five F one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked.
Correct.
Okay. So you guys, okay. Payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Egwol?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Sherman McNary?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
One more question.
We can't do anything about the traffic.
It's really close. The Easy Street Building, part of this project, the old Easy Street Building?
Oh, there's Cocos, the Easy Street Cocos.
Yeah, yeah, Cocos, yeah.
No, not yet. That building, we were, at one point, we were going to try. We went in, we looked at it. The internal is completely dilapidated, and we've been talking with CIA, maybe some future date, but not right, not right now.
The trails that you guys talked about, do they go, do they touch the back of that? Is the Cocos part of that property, or?
No, Cocos is a separate parcel that's that's divided by a strip, another parcel, another CIA parcel that's not going to be developed. Our access road comes through that parcel, but aside from the access road, the whole project is south on a seventy-acre parcel.
So where Cocos, Easy Street is, is the trails that are going to be connected to Roosevelt going closer to the back?
No, the trail, no, no, the trails.
There'll be a sidewalk.
There'll be, yes.
There'll be a sidewalk.
That'll come all the way up to the St. Andrews intersection. That will also be bicycle, bicycle and everything from the culinary. Instead of putting sidewalks right on nine, they'll run right through all the way to the intersection.
The sidewalk across the street is my favorite one in Hyde Park, the Saki Place. They did a nice job.
You're welcome. That was, yeah, it looks good. It looks really nice.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Well, thank you. Really appreciate you. Yeah, you, very soon.
We'll see you.
We have the rest of the variances now, and we're, we're hoping pretty soon we're going to get our secret from, on the rest of the project. So we'll be coming to you very soon on the, on the balance of the, balance of the variances.
We look forward to seeing you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay. Next, uh, no, I don't know where he's at. The first new public hearing is for Arietta, twenty-two, two O Z, two extensions, six oh nine Salt Point Turnpike. Looking, I will get the open public meeting in just a minute. We're looking for, to change the setback from fifty feet to fifteen feet and change side setback from twenty-five, this is an extension of the variance, twenty-five to fifteen feet, and change the impervious cover from maximum fifteen to twenty percent to build a new single-family residence. We gave you that extension before.
Correct.
I would move to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Has there been any change in the project at this point? You've taken down, taken down the house?
Yeah, so we've demoed, well, we got a demo permit, we had to abate it, there was some asbestos, then we took it down. We donated the Belco door to the fire department.
Could you speak a little more into the microphone?
And also identify who you are.
I'm sorry. Chris Motta, twenty-eight, L C, on behalf of Jessie Arietta, who wishes she could be here, but she's an MRI tech at a hospital, so she's working long hours these days. So, yeah, we've made some progress. We took the approval and what I consider to be concept drawings, which you had reviewed and approved as part of the variance process last year, and started to develop that. Like I said, filed for the building demo permit, abated, removed the building, coordinated with the fire department, donated the Belco door, and then went to pricing. And that's when things kind of went awry a little bit. It's been difficult to find the right balance between a reputable, good contractor that would come in at a bid that was in line with what a lender would be willing to give Ms. Arietta. And so it took a little bit of time, a little bit of reworking of things, you know, five foot wide, eight foot tall, offset pivot solid oak doors, nice, maybe not in the cards for right now. So we did eventually find that balance. And so now we have bid documents, we have contract, we have from a contractor. All of that has been submitted to to the bank, TD Bank, the loan, that's going to be executing the loan. I contacted Richard, and he's in the process of closing the demo permit. And I'll be calling the building inspector to schedule a plan review of the permit application sometime before Christmas.
It does look better already.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. Right. The building's gone. It's, it's, and so we're, we're hopeful that we'll be hitting the ground early in the spring.
Okay. Okay. Do we have anybody from public? Yes?
Yes.
Evening, members.
Oh, sorry. If you could just take the microphone.
Take that.
If you dance, you can take the mobile one.
I can't dance. I might be able to sit.
Okay. Can you take, just pick up that, yeah, that one.
Just talk into it?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I represent Ms. Capola. She is an adjacent property owner and, yes.
Is that, if I look at the house?
To the left.
Are you to the left of it or the right of it?
To the left.
The left?
Yes.
Could you just stick?
The tan house fence around the front yard.
On the left of the
Sorry. On the left. Ma'am, if you're going to speak, could you please take the microphone? Yes.
Could you state your full names, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's Tammy Capola, and the address is six oh seven Salt Point Turnpike.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't remember the question. You asked me.
We found out where you were. You're, you're living to the left of the building as we looked at it.
Right. It's the tan house that sits a little bit up off the road, and it's got a fence around the front yard.
You're to the west of that building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I'm Neil Seidel. I'm here on behalf of her. I was, we lived together for years. I just recently moved out. And so I'm familiar with the conditions of the property, and I'm also have a degree in civil engineering and have witnessed things and have some comments about the things that were said that really aren't true in the application. Since the raise of the building, the runoff has, first of all, there was no sediment control, no silt fence put up before the demolition. The runoff now and the grading since the demolition has sloped the water to her property, comes across the driveway, causes significant flooding in the basement, not to mention with the order of sulfur and effluent there. There's considerable sediment buildup at the base of her driveway after a storm action, to speak of that. As for the eyesore, sure, you changed one eyesore for another. There's a commercial vehicle parked on the property now, two other vehicles parked there that, you know, I believe is not really in line with zoning regulations. I'm kind of nervous about the fact that we just give them a square to build in without any, it's a two mother, father, and four children. That's a pretty large house, four bedrooms, maybe, three bedrooms, needing a pretty good SSTS to cover that. The neighborhood's already overtaxed with, you know, homes that have been additioned and people living and illegal buildings on other lots. I mean, the storm, the storm system is individually, privately, is very inefficient, and even at the county and the town level is not really, it's a, it's a very sloped area. So it's got a lot of runoff that comes down the hill. There's rock, not deep, so you got a lot of water that comes down the aquifer.
There's another street behind there, too, right?
Right. And, yes. And then, once it, once it comes out, then it comes out of the ground, like at the base of her, when we get a storm system, the water travels on the rock, you know, under the ground, but then it comes out at like the base of the hill, you know, and then it becomes like surface water. So, I mean, you know, that being said, we're not totally against it, but I just feel that like I'm kind of scared to just give this guy a box to build whatever he wants, when I already see, he's already deposited fill at the base of the, in the county right of the road, which has now changed the high point of the drainage of the road, which is puts it down, changes the whole direction that the road was designed to mitigate stormwater.
I, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify. The zoning board doesn't have anything to do with the actual physical construction.
Right.
It's just with regard to relief from the code.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm asking, I'm, I'm just bringing it where I think that, you know, I kind of just, I feel like it's, I don't know, environmentally, it's not, so here, let me, let me even speak on their behalf. The well is positioned in a place that's less than a two hundred feet from an uphill septic system that has already been failing and has surface effluent, you know. Have they tested the water to even see if they can have a well? They don't have a place to drill another well if the septic system, you know, on the property. So even on their own behalf. And then, I mean, they've, they've, they've said hardship because they were, they were, you know, led to believe that this was all, you know, going to happen and everything. But so what happens when you give them that, grant them that, and then then they have to go to the Board of Health? And now the Board of Health has to give them a variance because now they have an ability to build, but they can't meet a sizable septic. And then you're taxing the already overtaxed, you know, in-site soil to, you know, mediate more septic. You know, I just, I feel that, I feel like the project is too big for the lot, honestly. And, and as for the setbacks, I agree that the setbacks are getting better, but you're, instead of building right where it was, so now when you give them that rear yard setback, you've put their house down the hill directly across from her with all windows looking at each other, you know? I mean, if you grant them that, that, that zoning, you know, that, that variance, maybe a stipulation of no second-story windows on adjacent properties, maybe a six-foot stockade fence, you know, between the properties that, you know, that you have destroyed when taking the building down, you know? I just, I just feel that, and I already know that, you know, the man did the work himself, you know, I, you know, I just, I'm just kind of, I just feel that, you know, it's in her best interest. Somebody just needs to say something. That's how I feel. You know, I just, I, I would be leery to, you know, just, you know, let them build, it can't support a four-bedroom house. I'll tell you that right now. So unless they plan on putting all the kids in one room and them living in another room, you know, it doesn't seem like feasible project. You know, I agree with the setbacks that they'd have to build a tiny house, but they do diligence. You know, you bought the property as it was, you know, at a very, at a very below fair market value. I tried to buy the property from the people when we bought the house, and they said that they weren't sure what they were going to do with it, and then three months later, it was sold for sixteen thousand dollars. I mean, we would have bought it and added it to our lot, and then it would have been, you know, a non-issue. But we didn't even, we weren't even offered, didn't even know. So anyway, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, we're not totally against it, but I just feel that like somebody should put the brakes on because there's already stuff going on that are, you know, not in compliance, you know, there's, there's no, there's no stock, there's no topsoil or, you know, stockpile, there's no silt fence, no construction entrance. There's nothing, nothing but a guy who's been showing up there a couple times a month, doing some work, demoing the house himself, throwing it in a truck, taking it to God knows where, you know, I mean, and now, so the eyesore, the house is gone, but now there's a commercial vehicle parked on the lot, and two other vehicles, and, you know, and a landscape trailer, I think, you know? And he's deposited material down at the, in the, in the county right of it. It's not even on his property, in the side of the road, and changed the drainage of the, of the existing road. So, I mean, I just, I just, I don't, I'm not sure what your control is over, but I just feel that like, it seems like it's kind of backwards that, you know, they should, the health department should say what's in the ground. I mean, is the well, can the well support the house? Can the septic support the house that you could build in that area? It just seems like the horse before the cart here a little bit. I mean, the horse is before the cart here a little bit.
The cart's before the horse.
Yeah, you got it. I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember, I think. It's been a long time since I had to speak to, you know.
The cart is somewhere. Yeah, okay. Well, I, I appreciate your comments and your, and your frustration. I think to repeat, what we gave a variance was, was really for the setbacks.
Right.
The design, et cetera, and how that's carried out is, is not in our
Purview.
Purview at this point. Let me, any comments, sir?
Sure. I mean, I have no problems whatsoever sitting down with you and discussing all of these concerns and making sure that all of the information is accounted and, and spoken to amongst ourselves, but also with the building inspector, obviously, to make sure that all of that is exactly where it needs to be. And, yeah, I mean, we'll, you know, we're committed to making sure that.
Could you do that before December?
Sure.
Meeting?
Sure.
And have a proposed, the proposed site plan and a, and a proposed house, or?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah, there is, there's an existing site plan with setback, elevations, all of that, number of bedrooms, all of that was part of the application to the, to the zoning board, and I'll be more than happy.
So I, 'cause I reviewed the zoning, and all I saw was that one, one printout of a square on a property, I, there was no.
Easy to fix, we'll set up a meeting, and I'll walk you through the project, you'll give me your concerns, and we'll make sure that all of that is incorporated.
Yeah, I mean, we're not totally against developing it, I just wanted, just, I just wanna make sure that it's not an environmental, you know, problem, there's a swamp across the street, you know, I mean, it's, we're already seeing negative effects on the property, the physical, you know, from the change in grade, and, you know.
I mean, you had a building that was stopping stuff from happening, and the building's not there anymore.
Of course, I mean, but, yeah, but taking the, change the grade, but anyway, so I appreciate you listening, I just wanted to go on the record of saying something, so I have, is, so is this an extension, or is this a granting of a new permit, because it's over a year, right?
It's an extension of the permit.
I thought it was, the last one was signed a lot, more than a year ago, right?
It is a re-grant of.
So it's a new, it's a new variance.
Because they had lapsed.
Right, so this is a new application.
It did not expire.
It didn't?
Didn't.
Oh, sorry, I wrote re-grant.
What's it, 'cause it's.
It's an extension.
Sorry, they, they did apply for this within their time to extend it.
Oh, so they, okay, so, within a year, they applied for the extension?
Correct.
Well, I would make a motion that we don't close the public hearing, but continue until next month, you guys get together.
Sure.
Pending, both of you making the presentation about those issues that are of concern.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, you know, I just wanna, you know, my children live in that house, you know, I, you know, their children are gonna live in their house, you know.
That's the nature of a public hearing.
Yeah, and that's why I'm here, just, I missed the first one, if I had known, I would've been, you know, I just kinda missed it somehow.
Thanks for coming.
But, thank you, have a good evening.
Appreciate your passion, thank you. And we will move to continue the public hearing through December.
Twenty-first.
Sixteenth? Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first? I'll get it right.
Sixteenth is better.
Sixteenth is better, but twenty-first, twenty-first, we may show up, yeah, all right, twenty-first, I move that, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, you both for coming, thank you for working with us.
Of course.
And we see if we can close it out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get your.
And your, your first name again?
Chris.
Chris, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right. Close the public hearing, we got that one, Arietta. Wait a minute, we got this, is this one? That's table, okay, all right. Schmidt?
I think we're there. We're in business.
Yeah.
Excuse me, the new application introductions have been taken off the agenda for this evening, the only other business is the resolution to approve the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four.
Green Bush is taking off?
For tonight, yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, we have a, a, a resolution for the meeting dates for next year, I would move, and you wanna read the resolution?
I do. I just wanna know what the dates are.
You got it, you got it.
I'll do it.
Okay. This is a resolution setting regular meeting dates and application submission deadlines for calendar year two thousand twenty-four. Town of Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting dates. Meetings takes, take place at six P M. on the fourth Wednesday of each month, except for November and December, submission deadlines are fifteen days prior to the meeting. Regular meeting, January twenty-fourth, submission date, January ninth, February twenty-eighth, submission date, February thirteenth, March twenty-seventh, submission date, the twelfth of March, April twenty-fourth, submission, April ninth, May twenty-second, submission date, May seventh, June twenty-sixth, submission, June eleventh, July twenty-fourth, submission, July ninth, August twenty-eighth, submission, August thirteenth, September twenty-fifth, September tenth is the submission, October twenty-third, submission, October eighth, November twenty-first, first is the third Thursday, so November sixth will be the submission, and lastly, December nineteenth, which is the third Thursday, December fourth is the submission. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.